My brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And so then we thank God, we praise God for another day, another week, another opportunity to learn of Him and to, another opportunity to count on the privilege just to be considered, called as a child of the Most High. And so then we are thankful for each one of you for taking a moment out of your busy schedule to share with us here in this ministry of the New Hope Number One Baptist Church. To all of our New Hopeians and to all of our family and friends that shares with us each time during this week and so that we are thankful, grateful, appreciative of you just for taking a moment to share, to allow this ministry to be a blessing to you. So then I want you to take a moment out to call or text or inbox a church member, a family member, friend, and let them know that the New Hope Weekly Bible Study is on and it certainly will do them good not only today, but in the days to come. Certainly, we're excited about what the Lord is doing here at the New Hope Church and certainly those who may be visiting in the area, certainly you're welcome to come and be a part of what our Wish of Experience here at the Hope, each Sunday, Sunday School at nine thirty. Time for you to be in a setting of small setting with other believers as we are dudge into the Word of God on a, on a, on a, on a group, a scale that consists of dialogue that you can't do at eleven o'clock. So I promise you, it'll be a blessing as, as we grow together in the Word of God, and that's what I'm gonna be teaching, continuation about growing, becoming committed to the Word of God. And certainly, Sunday School, small, small groups and even in Bible study, wherever there's teaching going on, is that you ought to make it your business priority to, to be a part in that. So we encourage you to come on Sunday morning at nine thirty for Sunday School and then immediately eleven o'clock, our morning worship. If you ever in our area, certainly twenty-three thirty-eight Chalkdale Corner Road here in Thomasville, Alabama, you're welcome. Certainly bring someone with you and I promise you will not leave the same way you came. Certainly, our prayers goes out to all of our bereaved families, those who are sick, those who are shut-ins in home and hospitals and convalescing facilities, those who are in jail and prison walls, those who are in mental institutions and certainly those who are foreign land, certainly we praying for you, you in our thoughts as well. Shall we pray? Goodness God, our Father, we come today again in your presence. We come just as we are, empty pitches before full fountain. And Father God, before we ask of anything, we just want you to know that we appreciate it, we thank you for all that you have done for us, God, what you're doing for us right now and even if you have us up on a wake-up calls list, what you're gonna do in on tomorrow. God, we, we ask that I would just look on us again with our pity, our compassion, our mercy. Lord, we stand before you acknowledging that our sins are ever before us. Oh God, we ask that I would look on us and blot them out as we confess, oh God, that we have done some things that we shouldn't have done, that we've said some stuff that we shouldn't have said that was contrary not only to your will, but to your word. God, grant us, oh God, forgiveness and God, we pray that I would such our heart that anything is not like you, that is not becoming more in the image of you, oh God, we ask that I would just forgive us now, strengthen us where we're weak and continue to build us up where we are spiritually torn down. God, I'm praying now for those who in this setting with us, whether God in person and virtual, God will pray that you just stretch forth your hands and God, whatever the needs are, meet it right now according to your riches and glory. God, I'm praying for those who've asked us to pray for them. God, you know them name by name, you know them by their condition and God, stretch forth, God, your healing hands and whatever the, the manner of disease that got them out of disease. God, I pray that you will heal those confused minds. God, I pray that you touch the men, those broken hearts, those fevered, aching bodies and bones, God, touch right now in the mighty name of Jesus. That unsaved person that is on that way to eternal damnation, God, I pray that something can be said, something within our action that will, will prick their hearts, touch their minds and let them know before it's too everlasting, too late to yield thy will to yours. God, I pray that you will allow them to know through your word and to us, oh God, that you can reach way down and you can save those who have fallen into a state of defamation. God, I pray that I would just touch them and let them know that you can still pick them up, you can still turn their life around. Bless only you can do. God, I pray for the body of Christ, continue, those of us who are saved, continue to strengthen us. God, continue to hold us in your unchanging and mighty hand. Bless us now, God. God, if we know that you bless us, we shall be blessed. If you keep us, we shall be kept. God, we thankful for everything. Thank you for all that you have already done, what you are doing right now and God, we bless you for the blessing that is on the way. Bless us now, keep us in your keeping power. And we ask that you will come now in the person of the Holy Spirit, touch our spiritually ears that we can be able to hear, eyes that we will be able to see, our hearts that we can be able to accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask now, you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in our sight, oh Lord, my strength and my redeemer. And all to those that love the Lord, say amen. All right, God bless you. Now let's get right into our discussion as we're still dealing with the importance of commitment and we want to turn to the ninth chapter of Luke, verse twenty-three, we've been dealing with that and so we wanna kinda look at this verse and kinda dissect it and get some nuggets out of, just dealing with commitment and that would do us good not only today, but in the days to come. So we have already read this verse, but we just wanted, we hadn't taken time out to kinda look at what Jesus is actually saying here that is dealing with commitment and certainly dealing with the importance of the Word, being committed to the Word, believing the Word. And so if we're going to be committed, is that we got to believe Jesus, but we also got to believe the Word, okay? So let's, let's see what, I, I love the New King James Translation and I'm gonna read that and but also I, I love how the easy translation, version of the Bible reads that gives us a little bit more clarity and I, I encourage you as Bible students to familiarize yourself with other translation that, that, that is dealing with more the, the modern day language. I know there are some that is so far in the left that kinda takes away what the original language, but, but then there are others, other than the King James Translation, that kinda better explain, kinda give you, won't have to go to too many commentaries and you won't have to do a whole lot of deep study and stuff like that if you can just look at some other, other translations. Definitely do your homework with some of those translations, I mean versions of the Bible. So I'm gonna read the New King James and then I'm gonna read the easy version of this particular verse. All right, are, are we there? Luke nine and twenty-three, the New King James Translation said, "Then he said to my Jesus to them all, 'If anyone desires to come after me, let him deny himself and take up his cross daily and follow me.'" All right, that's the New King James. All right, now listen at the easy translation of the, of that, of the Bible, the same verse. It says, "Then Jesus said to all the people that were there, 'A person who wants to be my disciple must not think about himself. He must decide that his own life is not important. Every day he must be like someone who carries his own cross to go and die. Then he may come with me as my disciple.'" Oh, I love how, I love how that read. I lo, I love, I love that. Let me read it one more time. "Then Jesus said to all the people that were there, 'A person who wants to be my disciple must not think about himself. He must deny, he must decide that his own life is not important. Every day he must be like someone who carries his own cross to go and die. Then he may come with me as my disciple." Saying somewhat the same thing that the King James, New King James is saying, but it's kinda bringing it more clarity, kinda giving me a better understanding in my today's language of what Jesus is like actually saying. And so I want to start by asking the question and, 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 and me asking the question, then I wanna turn around and answer the question with some clarity about what the Lord already meant when he says disciple. So do you know what that word disciple mean? All right, what, what, what is a disciple? What is the definition of a disciple? I, I wanna say that, that there is, there is three words, three, 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 not three words, but there's three definition of my understanding when it come down to a disciple. And, and so a disciple is a follower of Jesus Christ. I wanna write that down. A disciple is a follower of Jesus Christ. Uh, uh, he or she follows Jesus with, uh, with, with, with these purpose in mind. Uh, first of all, he or she follows Christ to learn about Jesus Christ, okay? That's, that's the first thing I want you to write is that, is that, is that they, that, that mindset and their goal, their purpose is, their objective is, first of all, to learn about Jesus Christ. Secondly, to be obedient to his command. To be obedient to his command. And then thirdly, to be like him. Okay? All right, let's, let, let's, let's get a recap. To be a disciple of Jesus Christ, main objective, main purpose is to what? To learn about Jesus Christ. To be obedient, secondly, to be obedient to his command. And then thirdly, to be like him. All right, say, I wanna be like him. I don't wanna be like Mike, I don't wanna be like any of these other celebrities or any of these other biblical characters or any other persons. I wanna be like a Christian, wanna be like Christ. Why do you wanna be like Christ? Is that, that is, that, that is, that, that, that is the only way that you and I are going to be authentic, uh, 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 Christians. We can't say that we a Christian and don't wanna be like Christ. You have to tell yourself, you have to remind yourself is that I am a little Christ, that I am a little Christ. Now once Christ is in us, and how he gets in us is going through the process of being born again, regeneration. And once, and once, once we have been spiritually brought into the family, born into the family of God, then our ultimate goal, our ultimate desire is to follow Christ. Why, why am I following Christ? I wanna be like Christ. And the only way biblically, only way scripturally, that you and I can be like Christ is to learn. Is to learn about Christ. All right, are we there? To be like Christ, to be like him, is that we got to what? Learn. How you gonna be like someone? How you gonna know about someone when you don't spend no time with that person? You can't know your pastor, pastor can't know his members if he don't spend time. There gotta be some spending, some time. How you gonna be like someone? If you never spend time with that person? And the only way that you and I can spend time with Christ, since he's not here with us in person in flesh like he were with his disciples and those two thousand years ago, is that the only way that you and I can spend time with Christ, we're past, I'm glad you asked, is in his word. We learn Christ, we learn about him through the word. You learn every, 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 every book, every book in the, in, in the Bible, them sixty-six book. It's all centered around Christ. And it's very important that we come together, not just in private, but it's very, very important that we spend some time, whenever, whenever and wherever the word is either being preached taught, is that you ought to make it a point in your life to be present. We learn the Word of God through studying the Bible. We have a worship celebration taking place. So keep in mind is that every born-again believer, we are following Christ with one thought in mind. And that is to be like him, H-I-M. The Bible is about him, H-I-M, it's about him. You, you ought not be following Christ, you ought not wanna be like Christ, uh, 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 just for the loaves, just for the bread. Be surprised the folks that come to church, attend church, got their name on some church roster, just to see what they can get, just for the, the meal. Don't just follow Christ for self-globalization. Don't follow Christ just to say that you's a member of New Hope Number One Mission and Baptist Church. No, that's, that, 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 that's not a good reason to be following him, H-I-M. I'm not following him for people to see me doing work, just to be working in the church. So that I can get accolades, I can get praise. No, that's, that, that, that's where, that's where we, we get self-globalization, but we ought to be glorifying him. So I'm following him so that I can be like him. And I believe the church of yesteryears used to sing, "Oh Lord, I wants to be what? A Christian in my heart. I want to be more like Jesus." In my heart, I think S- Satisht was a, a conductor several years ago about, um, born-again like Christians that was already saved and it was a, it was a, it was, it was a survey that, 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 that was conducted and it says that the average Christian, uh, 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 feel or believe that they cannot be like, like Jesus. Let me say it again, is that the average Christian think that they cannot, no one can be like Jesus. What a sad indictment. It's sad to be associated with someone, it's, it's sad to be a follower of him, you following behind somebody that you feel that you cannot be like. And any person that has that type of mindset, it's good teaching right here, any, any person, any, any, any authentic Christian, any authentic believer that has that sin, that they cannot be like Jesus, is actually saying to Jesus, "Jesus, you not good enough to be my teacher." Think about what I just said. Anyone, any Christian, any believer, any born-again believer who has really had an encounter with Jesus that says that they cannot be like Jesus is saying in actuality, let me say that, let me say it loud, they are saying in actuality that Jesus, you not a good teacher. And the truth of the matter is, let me say it, I, I don't wanna bust anyone bubba, 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 but let me just, let, let me put some clarity there. It, it, is that, is that, is that the problem is not Jesus being a good teacher, maybe you not a good student. And what, what a sad indictment is that we can be in the church, we can, we, we can hear about Jesus, we can read about Jesus, we can sing about Jesus forty, fifty years, or thirty years, and still don't know him. Still not really following him, still, still really don't know him. We can invest all of this time, all of this energy, all of these years, and still don't know Jesus. Jesus only had three years for these disciples to learn about him. How did Jesus bring a change into these men's lives? How did he change their nature? The change came about being around, spending time with him. Believing in him, that, that's what, that's what John, uh, the apostle wrote in John chapter one, verses twelve, "But as many as received him, to them he gave what power? To become the children of God." Here go the key word, "And to them that believe on his name." In order for these disciples to have a change of nature. Christ had to change them. And according to John one and twelve, is that the only way that you and I is going to have power. We got to believe. Oh yeah, we got the power to be like him, it's right in that verse, twelve. He gave them power to become the children of God. If we're gonna be children of God, to be like the Father, is that we got to what? We got to believe. Thank God he don't leave it up to our own strength, our own, uh, uh, abilities, our own intellect. If he lift it up to us, is that we won't be nowhere. If He lift it up to us, is that we won't be nowhere. We would never become children of God. Thank God for the Holy Spirit, thank God for the Holy Ghost, because the Holy, the Holy Ghost, the Holy Spirit help develop us. That's good teaching right there. They said the Holy Spirit helps develop us. And if Jesus continued to terror, is, is that, is that uh all of us going, you know, we, 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 we gonna die. And our skin, our, our, may wanna say ashes or whatever, our flesh is going to return back to the dust. The sinful flesh that we have is gonna be done away with when Jesus comes back. And Paul said, "We gonna get a glorious body, we gonna get a new body." And that new body is gonna be what? Like Christ. I think uh one of those hymns that, of the church about Amazing Grace, and uh I think that last um uh uh verse in that um uh Amazing Grace hymn is that when we been there ten thousand years, uh bright shining as the sun. Oh Lord, thank you. That's, that, that, that's, that, that's good news right there. Because uh if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, is that the, 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 the brightest elements that is upon the earth that God created was the sun. And according to the record, is that the sun at its brightest is at noonday. And what I believe, and I'm hoping you believe as children of God, is, is that, is that after what? We been there ten thousand years, yeah, we gonna shine as bright as the sun. Praise is over there, you, you know, that, that, that's good news, we gonna be brighter uh than the, than the sun. And you can't say that if you don't believe that we're gonna, according to the word of God, that we're gonna have a glorified body. And the reason you, you cannot shout for joy, you cannot have jubilation in you, is because if you have not read that, if you have not committed yourself to believing that in the word of God, then it may not happen to you, but I believe it. So the question is, are you a disciple? And if there's any doubt in you about uh being a disciple, then as long as you got some breath and you listen and you read and you study the word of God, is that there is some hope. You not the only one, he still, I'm still learning myself. And that's what a disciple, a disciple never graduate from learning. Even Jesus' present disciples, they did not uh 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 know all. They did not learn all that they needed to learn in them three years that they spent with Him. But because they did not learn everything about Him, that did not disqualify them for being a disciple. They kept their mind, they kept being, having acquisitive mind of learning. And when you look at those disciples, the very, very uh first day that they, that Jesus called them, He called them into training to be like Him. And all they had to do was commit themselves to Him. They was committed to learn because they wanted to learn. That's what, that's what, that's what, that's what has stagnated, that's what has crippled the, the body of Christ. That what, that, 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 that's why there are no growth in the body, in the church. It because there are those who claim to be Christian, there are those who claim to be believers, know it all. They don't have a spirit of learning. These were some grown men in, in, in the world uh uh status. There wasn't no little babies. But when you read the Bible, you never known God called anybody regardless of their age, He never called them grown men and grown women. He always referred to them as my children. God don't look at us from the standards of the world when it come to age. God refers to us as His children. And I don't wanna get into that, but, but, but uh that, that, that's worth noting, that's good, that's worth taking into consideration. God never looks at us, has called us adults. He always referred to us as His children. Cause you can teach a child something, I didn't mean to go there, you can teach a child something. A child has an acquisitive mind of learning. They're very observant. They're open to new things, new adventures. Always into something. Always busy, leave that alone, get out of that, they got an acquisitive mind. They wanted, these disciples wanted to be like Jesus, they, they saw Jesus perform miracles. They saw what He was doing, bringing about a change in persons' lives. They wanted, that excited them. They wanted to imitate Christ, that's what, that's what Paul told Timothy. He had to bring it back to Timothy reminded, the things, especially Timothy and the church and Philip. He said, "The things that I have taught, that you learn from me, you do." And let me just park that just for a moment, even when uh we, we, we looking in the arena of us as a church family here in New Hope, is, is that, is that, is that New Hope is at a, at a point of, 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 of great opportunities, uh 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 bringing some hope and changes in the lives of the people. But until we get to a point of uh 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 wanting to spend time not only with the Lord, but to spend time to learn about what Christ mandate is, what the Lord requires of us, is, is that we gonna remain stagnated, we gonna remain at a point of complacency. And what have happened uh 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 is, is that, is that many has adopted the spirit of laziness. Oh yeah, let me say it again, is, is that, is that many have, have, have adopted that spirit of laziness. We don't wanna put in the time. We want the blessing, we want the benefits, but we not willing to put in the work, we not committing ourselves or putting in the work. And we have, and we have missed the message, the mission that Christ, that Christ has called us, God has ordained us. We are in the business of people. We, we, we are in the business of helping saving others. And the, and the only way that others, people are going to be saved is that according, and I, and I stand to be corrected, according to the word of God, the only way that people are going to be saved is gonna take a witness. It's gonna take a witness. Yes, I'm saved, but I also being saved. There are still some lost people that have not come into the acknowledgement of who Jesus is. But then there are some people that are saved, but they are going through a developing stage. They need some help. And that's why the Lord places, put the church where she is in order to be the safe haven, in order to be the place where others disciples are being, are, are, are learning to make other disciples. And that's what Jesus told his disciples in, in Acts chapter one, uh verse number eight, I believe, he said, "You gonna be my witnesses." Not just here in Jerusalem, but in Judea, Samaria, Othomus pass of the world. Or, or you listening to me? So if you don't know anything about Christ, you can't witness. If you have not spent efficient enough time with Jesus, you cannot be an authentic witness. Even those who are saved, even those who are already in Jerusalem, that need the help, need a witness to come to the witness stand. Okay? So if we gonna be a disciple, we got to learn of Christ. And these disciples, when you look at them, is that they left all. Some of them left their boat, some of them left their home, some of them left friends, some of them left their loved ones. And they began to follow, they began to walk after Jesus. And Jesus still extended that invitation to each and every one of us in Luke and Matthew rather, eleven and twenty eight, and then it, "Come unto Me," that's gotta word again, "and learn on Me." You can't know anything about anybody if you don't spend no time with them. Jesus said, "Learn on Me, for My yoke is easy and My burden is light." You got to first learn to be a willing student. Get that now, may wanna write that now, you got to first learn to be a willing student, a pupil. And you got to keep this in mind, is I don't care how many teachers you may have, you may come across, is that Jesus is the best teacher. Amen, Jesus is the best teacher. No, He didn't go to no seminary, He didn't have no PhD degree, but He's the best teacher in the world. It doesn't matter how old you are, how young you are, how learned or how unlearned, is that if you sit at the feet of Jesus, you can learn. He said, "Pastor, how can?" "Through the work of the Holy Ghost, Holy Spirit working." But you gotta believe the word. Okay, got to believe the word, gotta believe Jesus. You can't say that He is Jesus Christ. And that word Christ means Lord. He cannot be the Lord of your life, and you say you's a follower, when He's the Lord of your life, you's a follower. All right? And so, so everyone that uh say that they are a disciple of Jesus Christ, got to learn how to be a follower. All right? And so, uh so, so that's, that, that's, you gotta becoming, you got to be a committed disciple. If anyone wanna, he said, "If anyone wants to follow Me," get that, if anyone, if anyone, anyone wants to be my disciple, don't, 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 don't overlook that word, anyone. And that's what I love about Christianity, that's what I love about Jesus Christ, is that it is an invitation to everyone. No one is, is, eh 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 excluded from the possibility of being a disciple of Jesus Christ. And anyone in all of his, in all of his inclusiveness means everyone. Even when it came down to these twelve disciples, all of them had their own hidden agenda, but yet they stood around Jesus. And you got to be a follower of Jesus Christ. Okay, how bad that person may be. So, so, so we're gonna be an authentic disciples of Jesus Christ, keep that in mind. Is that everyone is invited. Regardless of that person past life, regardless of their behavior, is that they got to understand that word, anyone. And I think that's a good, that's a good spot there to leave because the next phrase that Jesus talks about, got a whole lot of Christians um having it difficult to do. And, and that word deny. That word, that word deny. We don't, we don't have no problem with the coming to him uh in so many, in so many words, but uh it's another thing when it, when he asking us to deny ourselves. And so I wanted, wanna look at that next week as far as if we're gonna be a disciple of Jesus Christ, if we're gonna be a follower of Jesus Christ. And this goes back to what he said in Matthew, was learning of me. Take my yoke. And you got to, you got to understand what that yoke meaning. So we're gonna deal with that as far as talking about that yoke and then denying. And we know, and we know that when we into self, when, when we, when, when, when we into uh the things that we have uh accumulated and acquired over life, over time, that really identifies, in so many words, who we are. What, what you talking about Pastor? I- i- is that um tell the truth, you don't want nobody messing with your stuff. When I say stuff, uh, your car, your house, your money, your attire. Uh, you don't want nobody messing with your children, your family. Even when it come down to food. Ask yourself, how, how would you react when uh when someone uh get a match and get some gasoline and, 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 and uh poured the gasoline on your house? And uh stretched your match and set your house on fire? How, how you gonna react? What would you do? If someone deliberately just hit your car? You got, you sit down and, 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 and you eating food and somebody come by and spit on your food in your plate? How, how you going, what you gonna do? How you gonna react? Even when it come down to your children. Our children. When, when someone is mistreating our children, our grandchildren or whatever, and, and uh how, how, how do you respond to that? You know, how, how you, how, how you going to uh, 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 act? Even when it come down to our money? Huh? Uh. You, you just gonna let somebody uh, uh, take your money, steal your money? Whenever they get ready? No, you, you're not, you're not going to, you're not going to do that if you in your right mind. And, and I want you to think on those terms because there are certain things in our lives that you and I have that if people fool with it, or if people mess with it, is that there may be a problem, they may, they may, they may, they, they, they may have some problem with me. Why? Because people, certain people, certain things represent who I am. They are part of me. They are who I am. Just think about it. Is that what we have accumulated, what we have occurred, people, things or whatever, is that it represent us. Even when it come down to automobiles. Everybody, everybody don't have the same taste, the same liking when it come down to automobiles. Certain color. Those things represent who we are. So I want you to start thinking about in terms of how we protect and, and, and how we handle uh, the possessions that we have in life. Is that we also have to look in terms of the reality as being a Christian, how we, how we handle and how we uh respond when it come to others. And so I wanna look in that arena as far as uh that word deny. And it goes back, and let me read what the easy translation says again, and then we're gonna stop there. In chapter nine, verse twenty-three, then Jesus said to all the people that was there, "A person who wants to be my disciple must not think about himself." Does that word deny? "He must decide that his own life is not important." Every day, he must be like someone who carries his own cross. We're gonna deal with that cross later, but, but, but I wanna, I wanna, I wanna point out, I wanna interlay what he said. That if any person wants to be my disciple, he or she must not think about himself, but he must decide that his own life is not important. And the question is, are you there yet? How important is your life? Is your life more important than dying for? And this goes back to what I said earlier, what Paul says. That old song, hymn song, I love it. When we've been there ten thousand years, are we gonna outshine even more than the sun? So think about it. And once you think, thought, think about it, then ask yourself, am I being more like Christ? Alright, God bless you and God keep you, is our prayer. Let us pray. God, we thank you now for your word. We thank you, dear God, for another opportunity to grow and to learn more about you. Uh, continue, dear God, to allow us to sacrifice and to uh crucify our flesh. Father, we praying now, thank you for giving us our helper, the Holy Spirit. And pray, God, that you continue to uh begun the work that you've already begun in us, to bring it into completion. God, continue. We, 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 we cry out for help. And we thank you, dear God, that, that you granting each one of us the helper. And God, let us come to the realization that we are not in this by ourselves. That, 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 that you're with us, the Son is with us. And then thank you, God, that even in this present age, we have the Holy Spirit. Teach us how to crucify our flesh and self. And God, we know we cannot serve you without serving others. When we serve others, God, we know that we are serving, we are following you. Bless us now in Jesus' name we pray, amen.